This night of March 12th, would you all please rise for the flag salute?
Director Wenskill.
Here.
Director Ushka.
Here.
Director Viall.
Here.
Director Hein.
Here.
Student Representative French.
Here.
Student Representative Bernarte.
Here.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Remove adoption.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded, is there any questions or comments? So I will note that on a previous iteration of the agenda that came out, there was the item on the interpreter contract, that item has been pulled from the agenda so that we can do more due diligence on that topic. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item number two, recognition of staff, students, and community.
Good evening, President Hein, Board members, and Superintendent Santorino. I am L. Warmuth, coordinator in the Public Information Office, filling in for Dan Bopel, Public Information Director. Some schools seem to constantly turn out students who excel at school, whether it's through academic success, sports, or community service. Wilson High School is one of those schools. Wilson Principal Dan Bissett has brought two of his students who have earned well-deserved honors. Adeya Granberry, Boys and Girls Clubs of South Puget Sound, 2015 Youth of the Year, and Jasmine Parker Barrero, State Champion Wrestler in the 130-pound weight class. So let's welcome Dan Bissett, who will explain what his students did to earn their awards and introduce the girls and the wrestling coach Joshua Dickerson. Dan?
Good evening. I'm going to read a little paragraph here about Adeya Granberry. DA Gagne Branch in Tacoma has been, she has been named the 2015 Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound Youth of the Year. And she will represent the organization at the state-level competition in March. Adeya, besides being the ASB president at Wilson High School, she's a vice president of her key club, numerous AP courses, plays on the women's soccer team at Wilson. She has also made a significant difference with our special needs population at Wilson through our project Unified Soccer Program, which is highlighted in the district website and on our website. Adeya is an amazing young lady. She is very modest and very unassuming about how incredibly talented she is. I just asked her, hey, what's your rank, your cumulative GPA rank at Wilson High School right now? She goes, oh, I don't know, maybe third or fourth or something. I go, nah, you're number two. Only had one B. So she's had a pretty good four years. Adeya, come on up.
Hello. I just want to say thank you for having me here. We're here with my mom, Cher, and my grandma, Marilyn Granberry. So my plans for next year, I'm going to go to college. I'm not sure where yet, but out of the schools I've been accepted into so far, I'm looking at Boston College, and I'm looking to major in business administration. Either finance or economics is my focus, so, yes, thank you.
Would you come up so we can congratulate you?
Oh, yeah.
Next, next I'd like to introduce our head wrestling coach at Wilson High School, Joshua Dickerson, who will talk about his amazingly successful young lady from the state tournament this year. Coach Dickerson.
Good evening, thank you for having me. It's been two years that I've been the head coach at Wilson High School. It's probably been one of the greatest achievements in my life, giving back to these kids. Jasmine is a very unique athlete. She's a seven-time Judo National Champion. And coming in, in her first year in high school wrestling as a freshman, she combined a record of 25 wins and one loss to become the first female state champion in Tacoma School District history. I give you Jasmine Parker Barrero.
Hi. So I'm here with my mother, Risa Barrero, and my dad, Ron Parker, who have helped me through this, and I want to thank you for having me here.
Please come up so we can congratulate you. Pretty awesome, first state champion in wrestling. That's a big deal.
As a freshman.
As a freshman. Three more to go.
No pressure.
She could be our first four-time state champion in both boys' and girls' history.
Yeah, I think there's, I'm going to look at Deputy Superintendent Garcia, our resident wrestling expert, I think there's only 12 athletes ever in the state to win four consecutive.
I believe you're accurate. One of the unique things about the women's competition is, is there is no divisions. And so the women compete against women from all across the state. And so I would argue, unfortunately for my past history and colleagues, that the women's division may be the toughest division of them all.
All right, well, congratulations. Next item on the agenda, item number three, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation, your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period is ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name, when it is your turn to speak. To address the school board, please speak into the microphone, you will have up to three minutes to share your comments. Superintendent, do we have any comments this evening?
We have several, several citizens that have come to speak about an interpreter issue in Tacoma Public Schools. Since there are so many of you, I really urge you to listen to each other's testimony. You'll each have three minutes, and so we want to make sure that if you hear somebody say the same thing that you were going to say, that you either add a different, a different point, okay? Thank you. First person up, I'm going to call two at a time. First person up is Whitney Hill, to be followed by Lisa Olivia.
And as they're making their way to the podium, I will remind all speakers that you have three minutes. With one minute remaining, you'll hear a ding on a bell, and then at the end of your time, you'll hear that second ding, and because we do have a number of people speaking tonight, please do honor those time parameters.
Hello, my name is Whitney Hill. I'm a certified sign language interpreter for the past 10 years. I'm also the founder of a group called Interpreters for a Living Wage, which is a consortium of professional interpreters, about over 100 across the state. And I'm the chairperson for the Washington State Registry of Interpreters for the Deaf Legislative Committee, which was involved in passing House Bill 1144, the Educational Interpreter Standard. And I'm here to talk to you today about the issue of sign language interpreters district-wide. It seems the school district, according to what staff and students are telling us, is the district is already out of compliance with four federal laws, the ADA, the Rehab Act, IDEA, and now the new House Bill 1444, which doesn't have a name yet, but the Educational Interpreter Standard. I know you're all well aware of the protections afforded to students and to the staff members you have here, protected by those laws. I wanted to talk a little bit about the impacts of switching to a contract that you knowingly, after you hear some of the testimony from the group today, you are going to be knowingly out of compliance with that law, and you are going to be knowingly entering into a contract that is insufficient to meet your need for interpreters. Currently, the district's need for interpreters is about six full-time classroom, all-day interpreters, interpreters for every IEP meeting, disciplinary action with every deaf student, all staff functions, every professional development training, every staff meeting, every interaction staff have with peers. Those are all filled by a freelance interpreter agency. This might have been because the district has, over the past few years, insufficiently hired full-time interpreters at its own district, depending more and more on outsiders to cover that need, which is not in best practice with interpreting standards, and does not meet the needs of staff and students. We would like to recommend the district look into this issue in depth, and find out if the district is in compliance with the ADA, with the Rehab Act, IDEA, and in compliance with new HB 1144, and if not, addressing the budget to fix that issue. Thank you.
Whitney Hill? And remember, that first bell is just a one-minute warning.
Hi, my name is Olivia, and I have two deaf children in the Tacoma School District. And I have concerns, because I've heard that you're contracting with an agency called Universal Language. I am deaf myself, and I've used both agencies in question, and I know about their services. One agency, Universal Language, is limited by their interpreters they have on their list. They're very limited compared to ASL professionals, they have numerous interpreters on their list. Also, Universal Language is not a long tradition, has a very bad reputation. They have a serious lack of knowledge and exposure and experience with the deaf community. That's my concern. ASL Professionals, they're, and ASL Network knows what they need for each student, they can accommodate them well, for legal, medical, and their education. And all of their staff are fluent signers, and interpreters are experienced themselves, and Universal Language does not have that. Do I still have time?
About two minutes.
Okay, great, thank you. Really, I want you to look at this issue, the evaluators that were there, the five, three didn't even know sign language, they didn't know anything about the culture, and one did. So please look at the evaluators and make sure that they really know our culture and our language, and other things that are incorporated with that. Thank you.
Next up is Haley McBride, and then Missy Lewandowski.
Haley, as I abstain, I'm not going to tell them.
Okay, so you want to be, okay, and so next would be Missy Lewandowski? And after that would be Jessica Ropella.
Last name again, please.
Ropella?
Hi, my name is Missy Lewandowski, and I'm a mother of two deaf children that attend school in this school district. In the record of Universal Language, I'm concerned about their quality of interpreters. I just want to give my feedback on that. They have lousy qualified interpreters means a lousy quality of education for my children. And stability is very important for my children. If they don't have consistency of interpreters, it really tends to mess up their education and their focus, and they're going to miss tons of stuff in their education, so I just wanted to add that in there. Thank you.
Jessica? And next is Brianna Stemkowski, I believe.
Hello, I am Jessica, I am an interpreter on staff at one of the schools here in the district, but the reason I'm going to speak today is just to read a letter that was typed by a couple teachers that couldn't make it today, and I just wanted to get it on the record. So, "To whom it may concern, the inadequate ASL interpreter coverage in Tacoma Public Schools, specifically at Bernie Elementary, has negatively impacted both our deaf hard-of-hearing and our hearing students. Our deaf hard-of-hearing students, who typically thrive in the general education environment, struggle academically and behaviorally without an interpreter providing them with access to the instruction our hearing students receive. By denying our students access to the education and opportunities to which they are entitled, TPS is setting them up for failure now and later in life. Without receiving instruction throughout their school careers, these students will not reach their full potential and may fail to become productive members of society. Additionally, our hearing students see and understand the way the district is treating our deaf and hard-of-hearing population, and are learning that it's acceptable to deny people with disabilities access to their rights as a member of our society. As educators and citizens of Tacoma, we are appalled that this situation has been handled in the way that it has by Tacoma Public Schools, a district which has the motto, 'Every student, every day.' Sincerely, Lindsay Osland and Julie Hansen."
Brianna, and next will be Kayla, Kayla, I'm not sure your last name, Kayla. B-E-E-R, I believe. Beers, thank you.
I come here today to share my frustration with the recent change in American Sign Language interpreting agencies, specifically the lack of foresight regarding agencies' ability to provide services. I completely understand and sympathize with the school district trying to be fiscally responsible with taxpayers' money. I can appreciate that the school district took an active role in seeking out bids for interpreting services to make sure that they are hiring for both quality and best cost. My frustration comes from the fact that the school district has chosen an agency that at this time is completely unable to satisfy the very consistent needs for interpreters. We currently have been hiring on a daily basis well over five student-utilized interpreters. The exact number of interpreters used daily is not a new situation. From the beginning of the school year, we have been operating without enough staff interpreters. This does not even take into account any scheduled or last-minute staff interpreter subrequests. We are aware that our interpreter coordinator is working hard to provide enough interpreters, allowing students to have access to education. It is also my understanding that the previous interpreter agency stopped providing services abruptly last Wednesday because they were not receiving payment for the services that they were providing. Therefore, the lack of funding for interpreters has created a significant deficit of education for students. This delay of education access could continue until April. Almost a month of little access to education does not seem like the goal of the Tacoma School District or its legal obligation. Staff interpreters had warned the school district representatives that the cost of agency interpreters are extremely high, and provided reasonable ideas for solutions to the lack of staff interpreters in our schools. None of these current problems are new, last-minute, or unexpected. These are ongoing issues since the first day of the school year. It is reasonable for the school district to look at cost when making a contract with anyone. Cost is not the only factor when making a contract. Equal with cost is the ability to provide the service. I have always talked highly of our deaf and hard-of-hearing program to others. I explain that we provide high-quality services to students, the staff is dedicated and skilled at meeting their needs. Not providing interpreters, therefore not having full access to education, is not the quality of service parents or students deserve, or legally should expect. It seems like a reasonable and legal obligation to find funding somewhere to pay the previous interpreting agency to continue sending interpreters until the new agency can comply with Tacoma's staffing needs. Thank you.
After Kayla is Carrie Owen.
Hello, my name is Caleb Beers, and I'm a staff sign language interpreter with Tacoma Public Schools. This year, we have felt like we were stuck in the ocean without a life jacket. To make things worse, there are students in the water with us that we're trying to keep afloat. We're treading water furiously, but our muscles are cramping, and we are exhausted from trying to keep everybody above the water, but we're about to drown. This year, we have not had enough interpreters to fill students' needs. We have had an abundance of substitutes. Last week, the problem was magnified, and we had no substitutes to fill those positions. Regardless of their reason, the truth is that deaf children are unable to access education, have limited communication because they do not have interpreters. We have been informally informed that we will be fully staffed by April, in a month. A month is a long time. Would you hire a substitute interpreter who only spoke Swahili for a month? Or allow a student to take a vacation for a month? No, because students will miss essential pieces of their education. So why have these deaf students been asked to miss a month or more of their education? Topics build on each other. How can students learn subtraction without addition? Or learn to read effectively without learning LMNOP? If these, there are pieces of the foundation of learning missing, anything built on top will fall over. I ask you to take a peek into our world as interpreters without, without enough staff. We arrive in the morning and examine the schedule. How do you decide who gets an interpreter and who doesn't? How do you decide whose education or an aspect of their education is more important than another's? How do you look into a student's eye and tell them that they cannot learn that day because their education is not a priority? How do you catch a student up on one or even several months of education? These are the questions that we face every day. Even when interpreter's absent, we rarely have substitutes. How do you allow yourself to be sick and go home and rest and heal when you know that students won't learn today because you're absent? I can answer that from experience. You don't. Interpreters come to work sick, or rearrange appointments that students won't go, will go without learning. As a result, many interpreters have gone without, with sickness for months that should have lasted a few days. And when it happens that we have no choice to stay home, we are racked with guilt, knowing that kids will not learn today because we are absent. I realize that there is no easy solution. I'm here tonight because we cannot, we as interpreters can't change that, can't find a solution. I'm here to implore you to help us because we want these kids to get the best education possible. I'm here because we are about to drown. Please, be a lifeboat, throw a life ring, help us save, help us help these students. Thank you.
Next, after, after Carrie is Raymond B.A.T.E.H.
Hi, I'm Carrie Owen, the owner of ASL Professionals. ASL Professionals is a sign language referral agency that specializes in providing the interpreter access for the deaf and hard-of-hearing communities in Washington State. What sets us apart from a foreign language agency is that we only provide sign language interpreters. I was born and raised in the deaf community. My grandparents were deaf, my dad is deaf, and my mom was a certified interpreter with strong roots in the deaf and interpreting communities. Because of this, I have a complete understanding of deaf culture, and I have a rapport with the deaf and interpreting communities that cannot be matched. ASL Professionals has successfully provided ASL interpreters to the Tacoma School District for the past 14 years. It is my understanding that you are considering awarding the ASL interpreting contract to a foreign language agency. There has been somewhat of a trial period to see if the other agency is able to meet your needs. During this trial period, the other agency, from what I'm hearing, has not been able to even fill half of the student needs on a daily basis. In addition to meeting all the student needs, I have been providing an additional 350 hours monthly for the Tacoma School District staff members. If the foreign language agency is awarded the contract, this would be added to their demand for interpreters. If they do not have the resources to cover just the student needs, it is my concern that they would not be able to meet the additional demands of the staff requests. My concerns are many. First and foremost, I have a heart for this community. Your deaf students and staff members deserve to have their interpreter needs covered by top-notch qualified interpreters. Many of the leading interpreters in the community refuse to work for a multi-language agency, or they only work for them for an occasional job because of the issues that arise due to a lack of a full understanding of the specific needs of the deaf community. Foreign language agencies focus on different standards and ethics. They are not governed by the same code of professional conduct that sign language interpreters are held to by the Registry of the Interpreters of the Deaf, which leads to this lack of understanding and inability to properly serve the deaf and interpreting community. If you look at the rankings of the recent requests for proposal, my agency ranked first in all areas that were evaluated, except cost, where I came in second. I am asking that the board not only take into account that ASL Professionals has a proven history and can fill all your interpreter needs, also that the large majority of my interpreters are from the South Puget Sound areas. When you take that into an account, an agency that is in the Bellevue or Seattle areas will most likely incur substantial more mileage costs, which will offset a large portion of any possible savings due to a lower interpreter rate. Thank you again for your time and consideration that you may give in helping get interpreters back into the classroom with the kids.
After Mr. Bate is Lance Forche.
Hi, my name is Raymond Bate, and I'm a college professor and a deaf political advocate and a community member, and I have similar comments as everyone else, but I want you to think of an example. You know, in America, there is a concern in the education community, for any level, if it talks about deaf or hearing people. If you talk about hearing, deaf people are already below them in education. So if we put them at this disadvantage, they're already at a disadvantage, how can we bring them up? We have to work harder to bring them up. This disadvantage will bring them even further down. Thank you for your time.
After Lance is Ms. Philo. Philo, P-H-I-L-O.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lance Forche, and I teach at the University of Washington. I teach ASL and deaf studies. I'm the program director for the past seven years, and I'm also a Washington ASL Vice President. I teach, I've taught ASL for 25 years, and I taught as an ASL interpreter training as well. And I've been in the deaf community many years, I've studied deaf education, and it's very important that the board is aware of the history, and do your homework, and do some research, and look into deaf history. It's a dark and oppressive history of failing in the education arena, and deaf people have been oppressed, they're behind in most, all our areas. And most hearing people don't have deaf experience, they don't know about the history of the oppression, but this seems that it's happening again. So if you look into that, just keep that in the back of your mind, to not do that again. Now, as a deaf person, speaking about interpreters, I've seen interpreters, and it is hard to watch an interpreter. I'd rather watch my teacher directly, use my own native language, rather than go through an interpreter. I know that deaf students are mainstreamed, and they are in the least restrictive environment, but it's not the same as getting it firsthand. They have to go through an interpreter, so it's not equal access, even though it may seem that way. Research shows that they only catch 80%, and that's with a top-notch certified interpreter. They're only getting 80% of the information, and you put that into a full day, and you think about hearing students, and now you look at a deaf person's perspective, their eyes have to be on the interpreter all day long, and you're talking, they're only supposed to catch 80%. Now, if they're looking all day, then that's going to break it down even more. Now, if they're looking at an interpreter that's not very good, that means they're catching even less. So where is their education? It's a huge barrier. The interpreter quality not being that well, not being that good, really does drag down their education. And as a parent, I've had educational interpreters interpret for me, and they don't understand me at all. I have to sign like a child to get them to interpret for me, and they make me sound like I'm a invalid, that I have no college degree. So it's so nice to get a freelance interpreter that knows how to speak for me, and speak well, and look like I have an education, and communicate well. My parents are deaf, so I had full access, but what about deaf children that are learning from these interpreters that are put in front of them? They have to have qualified interpreters for that. Thank you.
And after Ms. Philo is Sam Fitzgerald.
Hi, board members. My name is Karen Philo, and I'm from Washington State Association of the Deaf, and we're here to support, well, we're here fighting against the proposal to hire... We're against hiring Universal Language as your sole provider for ASL interpreters. As Whitney stated, we passed a law, the EIPA, we patched, we passed HB- We patched, we passed HB 1144, meaning we need to have interpreters take the EIPA evaluation to make sure they pass it before they can interpret for deaf children. And I was looking at this paper and comparing different interpreter agencies, and it doesn't say anything about having an EIPA certification or passing their test or what their score was. This says nothing about that, and it doesn't have their scores at all, and that's of concern. So I would encourage you to check into that, to see if they've even taken the evaluation and what their score was. That's important to check into that. As well, keep in mind, least restrictive environment, if students aren't well, don't have a good qualified interpreter, their least restrictive environment is compromised. You're accountable for deaf children's education, and you need to remember that. So please do some more assessing and look into their EIPA scores before you consider hiring interpreters or contracting agencies. And look into which agency has the most certified interpreters and has the highest EIPA scores and have already passed that test. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sam Fitzgerald, and my wife and I are both hearing parents of two perfect deaf children. The oldest is in kindergarten and the youngest is about to start preschool. Both of them, their first language is American Sign Language. And while we have learned and grown in our use of ASL, we are definitely in need of proficient and distinguished interpreters at school. As both of us are educators, we absolutely understand the importance of academic language in the classroom and that the success of students depends on that academic language being communicated clearly. So I've adjusted some of the things that I was going to say because of previous speakers, but I urge you strongly, both as an educator, but as a fierce advocate for our daughter, to please provide the absolute best interpreting services that you have available to you. Thank you.
So that was our last speaker. I just wanted to make sure that we let the public know that we've heard you. The item was pulled off the agenda because we, we got word that there were people that were really dissatisfied with the decision. It's real important for the public to know that part of the problem, part of the reason for this problem is that the number of vacancies for interpretive services this year has skyrocketed. So we have so many more students, students that need this service. We had initiated a request for a proposal early in the year. One of the things that we're restricted by is our ASL professional fees have exceeded the amount that we are allowed to pay by board policy. So that just means that, you know, when we get to that board policy limit, which is $200,000, we have to stop it before we come back to the board. We are currently using state, a state contract to fulfill the vacancies for interpreters. We know that it has been inadequate. We are monitoring student services every day and trying to make the necessary adjustments to support students. And all interpreter positions are filled beginning Monday. Who's, who's, who's going to hold me up for that? Is that John Bell? Is he here? Okay, all right. Jennifer, I didn't see Jennifer back there. So Jennifer has everything filled for Monday. So I just want you to know, we are working very hard to make sure that we take care of this issue. We have pulled Universal just temporarily till we figure out what we can do. I know from lots of experience that this board is committed to every child, every student, every day, and we will continue, continue to look into this issue. It sounds like it's pretty deep to find out what kind of solutions that we can come up with. While it is a beginning, a monetary, monetary problem based on a board policy and contract, we will work to resolve it to the best needs of our students. Thank you for your advocacy. We appreciate you coming here and being willing to, to give us. We took good notes, and so we'll get back to you to let you know what we're going to do. We may need some of you to come forward and help be a part of the solution.
So I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Director Wensko.
So we've been a lighthouse district for the deaf as long as I can remember. We're one of the, I think we service 18 school districts that come to our district because of our deaf program, maybe even more than that. And this is kind of disturbing to me to hear that we haven't been able to fit this need. So over the past couple of years, when we had to go to these outside contracts, I have been concerned about the amount of money we pay for the outside contracts over and above. They get a high salary. We pay money to the, to those contracting agencies. We need to look at what the fair amount is that we're paying, and some people sent me some information. I don't think we should be compared to Yakima and other smaller communities. We should be looking at local communities and what they're paying and pay at least that much. And when you say it's board policy that's preventing this, I'd like to know what that policy is and that policy needs to be changed. If, here it is, almost April, and we've been having this problem all year, it's very disturbing. So.
Any other questions or comments?
Sorry, thank you. Just for clarification, my understanding is the policy that if we have an expenditure over $200,000, it has to come to the board?
That's it. That's correct. That's the policy.
And so we're in a short-term resolution because it just got to the board, and we pulled it off for study, and we're going to resolve it quickly.
Yes, yes.
We, we've pulled, we have not pulled off, we have pulled off the, awarding the new contract. Tonight on your agenda is the, the ability to fulfill the contract that has, was already started. So what, the board policy is, just as you mentioned, Director Ashka, is a fiscal responsibility for any kind of services. Once it exceeds a $200,000 amount, that pol, that contract has to come back to you for approval. So later on tonight, you will be approving the expenditures above that $200,000. And then through the RFP process, the contract was awarded to Universal. That contract is what has been pulled off the agenda tonight to study the services, their ability to provide those services in a meaningful way, and allows us an opportunity to, what we heard from the community say, is it the quality services that we, that you said you were going to provide, and can you fulfill those services? So that's the, where we are tonight. And then in addition to that, the Human Resources Department and Ms. Rosellini is investigating what does a fair wage look like for interpreters? How do we solve the problem in a different way, knowing that one solution won't be so comprehensive that it solves the entire need, but that it will take multiple ways to look at the, the challenge and to fulfill the services? So a lot's going to happen in the next few weeks, to say the least, and including making sure that there are substitutes to fulfill that, the need inside the classrooms starting Monday.
I appreciate the abundant clarity. I think it's really important for our community to know it.
Vice President of y'all.
I would hope that, I appreciate you clarifying that because that's a fiscal policy that this board has so that we don't have, wind up at the end of a year and find out that we spent $2 or $3 million on something that we only intended to spend $100,000, and that, that's why we have it. It's not for, to penalize or anyone. Many years ago, Deputy Director, State Budget Agency, the Department of Social and Health Services, overspent their budget by 30,000, $30 million without one of these, and after that, State of Washington said, you have to have thresholds, and there are different thresholds, and that's why that happened. I would like us to put our innovative and creative thinking caps on here at this district, which we do such a great job, and see if we can't come up some kind of a better model for funding these services, whether it's a blended model of additional staff with consultants or however, what we call our interpreters, a consulting-type contract, and see if we can't come up with something better to fund this so that we have better continuity and better delivery of, of services to our, to our kids. Because I think every one of us up here is, is concerned. Obviously, we are, and the sooner we can do that, and I would hope that we would ask some of the members of the committee that, or the community that spoke tonight, teachers to perhaps participate in, in kind of a little charrette on how we can do this, this job better. I have confidence that we can do it. I mean, if we can raise graduation rates like we've done, I know we can work this one out. Thank you.
And I'd just add, on behalf of the board, I, we, we really appreciate you taking your time to come out and share your knowledge and experience with us so that we can make the best decision that's in the best interest of our kids. So thank you very much. With that, we'll conclude public comment. We'll move on to item number four, superintendent's report.
I'm going to pass.
We'll move on to item number five, the consent calendar. Before we take action, the consent calendar is full of all sorts of items that it may appear that we just rapidly move through it. We have seen it, all of the items well in advance and have had an opportunity to review and study and ask questions. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item number six, policy matters. 6A, first reading, policy 6210, purchasing authorization and control. Did I just steal your thunder? Is that what you were going to say?
This is the policy that was just being referenced.
Okay.
Yeah. This is the policy that defines the amount of purchases that need to go to the board. In that purchase, there's currently no provision for emergencies and what it means to make emergency purchases, and so we have clearly defined what an emergency would be under the state law and for the district.
So the deputy superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the board approves the increase of purchase order for ASL professionals.
Josh, turn the log on.
Oh, I apologize. The deputy superintendent redacts his statement. On behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services.
All right, any questions or comments on this first reading? All right, thank you. Item number seven, quarterly financial update. I believe we have one this month.
Not this month. Or not this month.
Item number eight, curriculum and instruction, no report. Business Matters, 9A, approval of increase in purchase order for ASL Professionals' contract for the 2014-15 school year. I believe you're warmed up.
At this time, the deputy superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends the board approves the increase of purchase order for ASL professionals.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item number 10, other business. 10A, approval of authorization for the superintendent to execute acquitclaim deed and excise tax affidavit for a specific portion of South 49th Street of Butting Giadroni Middle School.
The General Counsel recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to execute the attached quitclaim deed and excise tax affidavit.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 10B, acceptance of the value engineering analysis study, MacArthur Elementary School.
On behalf of the Chief Operating Officer, the Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors accept the value engineering analysis study report prepared by Roan Associates for the MacArthur Elementary School project and the attached response summary recommendations by the DLR Group and their design team.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 10C, acceptance of the value engineering analysis study, Stewart Middle School.
On behalf of the Chief Operating Officer, the Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors accept the value engineering analysis study report prepared by Roan Associates for the Stewart Middle School project and the attached response summary recommendations by the SETI architects and their design team.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just have one comment. I want to thank Mr. Maricombe for sending me a copy of one of the value engineering analysis, and just because I wanted to see, same thing that, you know, General Counsel calls me the nerdy school board member, so for this, for the same reason, I just wanted to see what that does, and for, and it, I had a fair idea, I've done it, I've seen it done before, but for those people that don't know what it is, it's looking at building and how we can save money before we even get started. So literally, it is value engineering, and we do like design build buildings, and so anyway, thank you, Steve, I appreciated that.
Of course.
Great process, and it looks like we're going to save a great deal of money.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 10D, acceptance of the value engineering analysis study, Wainwright Intermediate School.
On behalf of the Chief Operating Officer, the Executive Director of Facility recommends that the Board of Directors accept the value engineering analysis study report prepared by Sezon Associates for the Wainwright Intermediate School project and the attached response summary recommendations by DLR Group and their design team.
Can I move approval? Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 10F, approval of resolution number 1987, intent to construct Wainwright Intermediate School replacement.
On behalf of the Chief Operating Officer, the Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number 1986, certifying that the new Wainwright Intermediate School will be new in lieu of modernization of the old Wainwright Elementary School building, that the old Wainwright Elementary School will not be used for future instructional purposes and will be demolished.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item number 11, report to the board, superintendent.
So, board members had requested that Elizabeth Goldberg, our nursing representative, come and give a report to you about the current nursing services in the Tacoma Public Schools. So Elizabeth, if you want to come forward.
We missed item 10F.
I thought we did. 10F, we missed 10F.
I have one more.
Director Scott. Director Heinz, sorry.
Well, no, we just voted on 10.
10F. We missed 10F.
There were three for Wainwright, this is the last.
All right.
Oh, we got one more. I'm too excited.
I apologize, President Heinz, I threw you off.
All right, you did. Was it 10E or 10F?
We voted on 10E, now we have to vote on the. 10E has been approved, 10F needs to be approved.
Thank you, General Counselor. Item 10F, approval of resolution number 1987, intent to construct Wainwright Intermediate School replacement.
On behalf of the Chief Operating Officer.
I'm sorry, Mr. Maricombe, I'm pretty certain we just voted on 10F. I think we need to vote on 10E.
I think you're correct. Did you skip it? Let's see.
Yeah.
Yeah, we voted on 10E. We're on. 10E has been voted on.
I don't remember saying that, so maybe I read the wrong one, but you read the correct one.
That might have been.
All right.
I didn't hear the word demolished.
Okay.
It will really, really be demolished, and it will really, really be rebuilt.
Super demolished, all right. I apologize for the interruption, Mr. Maricombe, please continue.
So on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer, the Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number 1987, certifying pursuant to OSPI guidelines that the Wainwright Intermediate School replacement will be completed for the purposes for which state matching funds are being provided.
Move approval. Second.
And I would, I would just add for clarification that we haven't received approval to get state matching funds on this project. This is in hopes that the funding mechanism changes, and we're putting a little bookmark in to secure funds for Wainwright.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Now, item number 11, report to the board.
Elizabeth Goldberg.
President Heinz, directors, Superintendent Santorno, Dr. Garcia, and members of the board, I want to thank you for asking us to bring this topic forward and sharing the health services delivery model for Tacoma Public Schools. Health services focuses on the district goal of student safety. The Urban Collaborative Report also listed the health services delivery model as a fiscal consideration, and information presented in, will identify some next steps discovered in our preparation and review of information. I would also like to mention that health services reviews the staffing needs annually, and through this process, we're ready to go for next year. Some of the resources that I utilized for developing this presentation were the Washington State Department. So, this presentation will provide information from three content areas. We're gonna look at some background information, some student health data, and our delivery model. The Urban Collaborative Report was mentioned in the opening remarks, so I've provided a brief note as a point of reference at this time. And mainly, it's the consideration whether the needs of students can be met with reliance on LPNs versus RNs. So, the first content area to be discussed is background information. And the information will provide a brief description of roles and responsibilities for a few of healthcare job titles. So, there are various roles in healthcare delivery. Sometimes individuals wonder and hear different titles in various healthcare settings. I've received quite a few questions regarding certified nursing assistants, or CNAs. There are very specific laws in place for the care that CNAs can provide and the setting where they may work in. I would like to point out, as listed in this slide, that may, they may perform tasks delegated by a registered nurse. And the key piece there is delegation by the registered nurse in specific, very specific setting, settings. And they are licensed through this Washington State Department of Health. They are not authorized to practice in a school setting. Medical assistants are also licensed through the Washington State Department of Health, as with CNAs from the previous slide. There are very specific tasks and work settings along with a supervisory requirement. Medical assistants are not authorized to practice in a school setting. And although CNAs and MAs, as they are referred to, are not authorized to practice in a school setting, they may function in the role of an uncredited school employee, such as they just work in a job description, but it's, it doesn't require a license. And so, they would be working to this, the job description. The school nurse, or the RN, is the predominant position for delivery of health services to our students. The term nursing process is a major piece of registered nurse practice. There are four components to this nursing process. As you can see in the slide, they are assessment, planning, implementing, and evaluating. All of these components are involved in developing student healthcare plans for the safety of our students to attend school, for those that need them. A comprehensive school health program, which is one of the functions that a certificated school nurse, an RN, can perform, is safe medication administration, asthma rates monitoring in a school setting, vision and hearing screening, and infection control. Those are just examples of a comprehensive school health program. They are also familiar with school law. And they function independently in a school setting with the knowledge and skill to perform and supervise the care of students. A school nurse holds an ESA, an educational staff associate. Licensed practical nurses hold their own license and are accountable for their own actions. They use specialized knowledge and skill and judgment to carry out certain aspects of a designated nursing regime under the direction and supervision of an RN. And indirect supervision by the RN is allowed to carry out these selected aspects of designated care. And they do meet basic client needs in a routine nursing situation. School health clerks, the last role that we'll talk about, are unlicensed school personnel. And they have received training and orientation from the school nurse, who's an RN, which includes the training and delegation of medication administration. School health clerks at times work, work in the school when the nurse is not there. And it's, we have 27 elementary schools that may have school health clerk time working in them on the days that the school nurse is not in the building. School health clerks are required to have a current CPR first aid AED card. I've included this slide to help explain our current health services delivery model. This information is from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, guidelines for care of student with diabetes. Due to the increased licensed healthcare needs of students and an increase in the number of students requiring licensed healthcare needs in school year 2000, the district created elementary regional sites. And currently, there are eight total elementary regional sites, along with five full-time, with, with full-time licensed coverage in the middle schools. And the five comprehensive high schools also have full-time licensed healthcare coverage. The elementary regional sites currently are Edison, Skyline, Lowell, Fawcett Franklin, Northeast Tacoma, Lister, and Larchmont. The, the three, the three points to make here on this slide are, this is the care that, this is, this, these are some of the options for parents of students that have diabetes. And the first one is parents can provide care needed during the school day, or a parent-designated adult can provide the care. This requires training and a letter on file with the district. PDA is responsible for the care of the student. And a PDA can be a school employee. The school nurse is not responsible for any of the duties assigned to the PDA or covered by the PDA. Or, number three, the district provides licensed healthcare needs, and that may require changing schools and the district provides busing. And, and the eight regional elementary sites are the schools that, in the elementary setting, that the district provides care for students with diabetes or any student requiring licensed healthcare needs. And oftentimes, for some students, that may, may mean they have a condition that needs emergency medication that we cannot delegate to non-licensed school personnel. This slide just is a brief summary, looking at the roles and, and who can perform the duties and responsibilities. So, you can see the RN can work in a school setting, directs the school health program, provides the like, for licensed healthcare needs, is the individual that can, the professional that can train and, and delegate to staff, and is the health professional, as an RN, school nurse, that can create healthcare plans. This is the second content area for the presentation, student health data. We have lots of student data to share. It's a large amount of data, and some of it includes state reporting. Students have lots of needs, as evidenced by the data. This slide shows some of the numbers of students with certain health conditions. This information is taken from the district assessment report for OSPI. And it's a three-year look, picture of some health conditions, what we determine life-threatening health conditions, and then acuity levels of students. And that's where the levels A, B, and C come in. An example of a life-threatening health condition is, requires, this is a condition that requires a healthcare plan that only a school nurse or an RN can perform, and medication or treatment orders on file and at the school before the student attends on the first day of school. And only a school nurse RN can create the healthcare plan based upon the nursing process that was discussed in the very first section. I'd like to talk about each level of care for the students, the level A, B, C, and D on this slide. So, level A students are, those students require a one-on-one nurse to attend school for their safety and well-being during the school day. And that is, that is door-to-door, includes riding the bus. Excuse me. Level B are medically fragile students. And students in this category face the daily possibility of a life-threatening emergency, requiring a skill and judgment of a professional nurse. And so, they require a nurse in the building daily. Examples of this would be severe asthma, unstable or newly diagnosed students with diabetes, or seizure disorders that require emergency medication that only a nurse, a licensed healthcare individual could administer. Level C students are the medically complex. And students in this category require a nurse in the building one day a week. The examples of health conditions may be a student that has cancer, anaphylactic event, complex mental or social, emotional disorders. And the level D students, the health conditions in this category are uncomplicated and predictable and should be reviewed annually or biweekly or monthly by a nurse, a registered nurse, school nurse. I just wanna point out on this slide, the very bottom between the very, level D students, under 11, 12, and 12, 13, there's a major change in the number there. And that was, we received some clarification on how to report. So... This slide talks to student-related activity. And it, it's an interesting slide in that it shows the number of, of health room visits for students across the three-year. Students come to the health room for many, many reasons. And some, some of the common ones are scrapes, abrasions, head bumps, stomach aches, not feeling well, nose bleeds, loss of a tooth, social, emotional issues, splinters, toothaches. And so, there, it just captures the number of visits. All visits require first aid, perhaps, an accident report to be completed, referral to Medicare, a 911, or, excuse me, a referral to medical care, a 911 call, or a parent and guardian, or a parent and guardian call. The student seen in the health room due to illness and injury is significantly lower than the total number of students seen across the board there on the top row. And then, we take a look at students dismissed due to illness and injury. And so, those are the number of students that are sent home. And a lot of the students are returned back to class. The total number of visits in the top row seen could include those students seen in the health room for illness and injury, but it also includes some of our procedure visits for students that need some procedures at school. And also, the medication administration visits can be included in that number. This is a summary of medication training. And only an RN or the school nurse can provide this training. So, they train staff to administer oral medication. And with the policy change, that law, with, with law change last year and our policy change, it's not only oral medication that staff can administer, but eye drops, ear drops, and topical medication. And then, epinephrine can be delegated to non-licensed staff. And, but the, these are the number of trainings of staff that have occurred. And then, field trip, camping trips involve provision of medication for training pieces for the staff taking students on those school-sponsored activities. And then, the number of licensed healthcare provider contacts to verify or clarify orders for students. This is an immunization slide and just shows the amount of records reviewed. This can, this task can be completed by RNs, LPNs, or other school staff. And it's a lot of record reviewing. It's a lot of work that our staff do to get our students into compliance. And we try really, really hard to not exclude students for not having their required vaccines. But as this slide demonstrates, it can happen. We're fortunate in that one of the, one of the tools that we have in our state of Washington is the Washington Immunization Information System, where staff are allowed to go in and look in its view only to try to obtain vaccine, needed vaccine information for students. This is just the number of meetings attended by our school nurses, the RN staff, the initial vows, the re-vows, over a three-year picture or glance. Only a nurse can provide and complete this paperwork, our school nurses in the district. It's important for them to attend these meetings because the meetings can focus on medically fragile students and health-impaired Here's a look at the nursing procedures and the number of students that require the specialized healthcare needs. So, we have students that need glucose monitoring. The first number is the number of students. And the second number, the, in each column, is the number of actual procedures or the checks for the glucose. We have students that need catheterization, some colostomy care, tube feedings. The vagus nerve stimulator helps with seizure control. Nebulizer is a device that delivers medication and then sectioning of students. Case management and problem solving for these students is completed by school nurses or RNs to be safe while attending school. Training by the RN is important for these students to attend school so that staff are able to safely manage the procedures and care for the students. And this is the actual number of staff trained. And again, only a school nurse and RN can provide the training and delegate the care and procedure completion. This slide just demonstrates the number of students that our, our staff screen for vision and hearing. Vision and hearing screening is required by law in grades K, 1, 2, 3, 5, and 7 in our state. And our department utilizes a screening team model to complete these required screenings. The dental screening is a, we utilize the school-based oral health program through the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. Others examples of screenings not listed are hygiene, weight, nutrition, blood pressure, head lice checks, just to name a few that may be completed. The school nurse directs the school health program. Now that we've explained a few brief roles and student needs, this next section describes how our staff, how we staff our health services delivery model. This is our current delivery model. The RN or the school nurse, we have 22 FTE, and that's divided among 25 school nurses or RNs in our district. The, the third column there is the cost to our district. We have 12.1 FTE of LPN at a time, and there's the cost. And in our district, LPNs are in the, the role of a health room assistant nurse. And through a collective bargaining enhancement, unlicensed staff or the school health clerk, this is the cost to the district for the amount of, of employees working in that function. So, the five comprehensive high schools have full-time coverage by a school nurse or an RN. The nine middle schools have full-time coverage, combination of school nurse time and assistant nurse time. We have eight elementary regional sites. They have full-time coverage Monday through Friday by an assistant nurse and LPN. And then, one to three day, days per week of coverage by a school nurse. And then, our 27 elementary schools that are, aren't, that are not regional sites, we provide one to two and a half days per week of coverage by a school nurse and RN. And then, the two hours a day of coverage by a school health clerk on the days the nurse is not in the building through the collective bargaining agreement. And I, I wanted to just state that the 12.1 FTE for the LPNs, health room assistant nurses, is divided among 15 health room assistant nurses. I've included this, this slide just because it helps to, they're, these are items that just need to be included or taken into consideration when we look at health services delivery for our students in our district. Fifty-two percent of our school nurses, the RNs, are National Board certified. They're, the, the title for their certification is national certified school nurse. The average poverty rate of our district in the largest top 10 districts is the highest. We have the highest rate. And with all of the information said, we regularly hear from other districts about our model. And some districts are making a shift towards our model, which is centrally locating some of the licensed healthcare needs of students in a district. For the quality of care and providing for the needs of students, our current model for, for health services delivery addresses our students' health needs in alignment with the laws and best practices. Through, through the process of creating this report for the board, we realized that there are some next steps. We've identified some items that we can certainly look at and go forward with. addresses our students' health needs in alignment with the laws and best practices. Through, through the process of creating this report for the board, we realized that there are some next steps. We've identified some items that we can certainly look at and go forward with. And so one is to develop a recruitment and retention plan. We had their, and then under that, we'd like to develop an action plan for that and adjust some licensed staffing to align with students' needs. So that would involve pulling a team together to develop a plan and look at the challenge in recruiting individuals, which oftentimes can be receiving credit for years of experience. It seems that for the past two or three years, every year we have two to three to four full-time equivalents of school nurse position to fill. In adjusting staffing, as demonstrated by the previous slides, licensed staff can spend a larger time, a large amount of time on data entry. And an example would be entering vaccine information into our student system. And the vaccines are required by law for school attendance in the state, so that, that's a task that needs to be completed. So part of the action plan would be to look at strategies to adjust staffing and align with the needs. And perhaps that look, that may look at extra support of staff at key times during the school year. Based upon our middle school data, some adjustments can perhaps be made to align staffing. And this is due to life-threatening health condition numbers. For example, school A may have no licensed healthcare needs and yet continues to have full-time licensed coverage to be able to provide care for students should they enroll in the school. And in conclusion, I'd like to say thank you again for this opportunity to bring our model forward and share it with you.
Right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? Director Wenskill?
Yeah, I went to a school a few years ago, it might have been Larchmont, I can't quite remember. But there was a, a nurse there who was with the child, it was a one-on-one. But they said they were privately funded, came with them on the bus. So how many of those do we have? You know, like DSHS or somebody else pays the bill?
None that I'm aware of. We, we have currently nine students that require one-to-one care to attend school. And that's completed by, we utilize agencies to cover those student needs during the day.
So it is our responsibility? Now, I, I got the impression from this woman, this is a few years ago, that it was paid for by some outside agency. You know, they had nursing around the clock at their house, and this was their shift. Did that ever happen before? Or was I given that information?
Well, I know that that was an experience I had in another district several years ago. As the nursing shortage expanded across, that was a situation that I had that the agency no longer sent the nurses and it became the responsibility of the school. As it has become, you know, as it is the responsibility of the school. And in, this is my fifth year in the district, and I'm not aware of any agency in the last, I'm sorry, any of the providers coming with the children. We provide the nurses on the bus, as Liz said, back and forth during the school day.
We have at times had nurses working for us through a contract service agency who also worked as nurses for DSHS through the same contract service agency. So we have had students who have been served by the same nurses, sometimes for us and sometimes for DSHS.
Okay, and then one other question. If we had a outbreak of measles at a school and we identified certain students who didn't have immunization, is it within our right to have them not come to school for a short period of time while it played itself out?
Yes, under Washington law, there are circumstances that allow for students to be emergency excluded from school. Their families receive notice and have due process rights to challenge that.
Okay. That's all.
Any other questions or comments? Vice President Viall?
Goes back to what Director Wenskill was asking. And this is probably one for Rosalyn rather than for you guys. I, I noticed that we, we don't claim Medicaid payments. And I know in the past, school districts did, here in the state, build Medicaid for services, like we're talking about, that were provided for kids who received Medicaid. And I know that goes through DSHS, and I believe it was a fifty, well, changed to a fifty-fifty match. And the reason I know this, worked for a company who did this for the state and did it for, actually for Tacoma School District at that time. This was about probably ten, twelve years ago, where we actually did, for what you're talking about, General Counsel McMenamy, where Medicaid paid us, if we were willing to bill them. And I'm just curious why we no longer, we no longer choose to do it. I think I know the answer, but I'd like to find out. Because at one time, that was a fair amount of dollars. I know it's a record-keeping issue, but if you can respond to that, I'd just like to know.
Be happy to respond to that. Yes, I also have had that prior experience as well, the Medicaid ad-match. It's more cost-efficient for the district to pursue the funding through the safety net process for the students. And so that's been more beneficial for us. And as the rules have changed over the years, it's, it's become a better venue for us.
Okay, so we do receive safety net funds then for the children whose costs that we pick up as a district?
We do for the students that have the one-on-one nursing services and the services outlined in their IEPs, yes.
Okay, I guess at some point, I'll pursue this, you know, with you la- later. But I would like to see whether or not at some point it would be cost-beneficial for us as a district to look at Medicaid reimbursement for a number of the services that we do provide. And I know that we can do that, also third-party insurance coverage. I know there are some school districts across the country that are doing that. Might be worth taking a look at that. Maybe it is not cost-effective, but with all of the children that we provide services for, and if there is dollars there for those services to be provided, it might help us do some things, Elizabeth, that you want to do. And by the way, thank you very much for this presentation. I think, having worked out in the schools and received some training on some of the things for when we went on trips, I think our nurses do a fantastic job, so thank you.
I just want to say that we did do all that Medicaid. And it seems like we were prevented from doing it, and that's why we stopped doing it. I mean, there's some backstory to it, so it wasn't.
Backstory was the admin call.
Director Ushka?
If we go down that path, I definitely want to be fully informed on it. I know that there are some interesting things that come up in IEP paperwork, where you're asked to give permission to bill Medicaid. So now I have all sorts of questions that I don't expect answers for here and now, but I would love to follow up with you, just to see, for my own edification. So pardon the interruption, and thank you.
And I, and I will be happy to follow up directly with it. There, I will clarify that there are two types of Medicaid. So there is the Medicaid that we do ask, that we are required to ask for every student with, with a disability. And then there is the other type of Medicaid, the Medicaid ad-match that Director Viall was asking about.
That's what I'm talking about. Thank you.
And I would ask the superintendent, based on what I'm hearing from my colleagues, if we do decide to go down that path, if we could have that as a public presentation and not just in a Friday report, but give us an opportunity to be briefed on it and discuss it.
I would ask if, if we go that path and we come up with some recommendations, that we actually have a study session where we can really sit and go through and look at all the pros, cons, and, and what have you, and check with some other larger districts who I know are doing that.
So you're asking to reexamine the Medicaid match to see what it looks like and then report on that to the board?
Right, and look at possibility of, of insurance recovery too for some of the kids. Like, for example, the Tacoma Fire Department, one of the few fire departments in the country, will bill third-party insurance for transport if people have that coverage. If they don't, it's free. So I'm just saying, if there is that coverage there, given our limited funds for our nursing programs and nursing services, that we possibly look at that. I'm just trying to figure out, I'm not confident the legislature's going to give us a lot of money, to be honest. And if there's an opportunity for us to recover dollars that are out there for services, I think that we should be doing that. I think we owe our taxpayers that, thank you.
Director Ushka?
Just to be clear about my request, my, if we've done this cost analysis and we know that what we're doing is less expensive when we have those top-level numbers, I am not requesting that they redo that information and bring it as a presentation to the board, but we just have that information. If they are going to go back through the whole process, then I would like to be part of that discussion. I don't know what my peers also wanted, but I wanted to clarify my thoughts on that. I'm not asking for it to be redone.
So Jennifer, can you tell us what's, I mean, are you current? Have, when's the last time you already viewed it? Does it make sense to go back and look at a cost effectiveness? Or are, you know, would it be plausible to come back to the board and say, here, here's the match with, you know, without? So I'm kind of asking what the process would look like.
With that, I would need to consult with our CFO for her most current. That was done before my time here. And I think, I think maybe a next step, what we could do is, we could review that, discuss and maybe give an update through the Friday report about a next step. Because that was my last understanding, was that it was not cost-effective for us. But we could certainly provide that to then plan for a next step.
Okay.
All right, that sounds good, thank you. And I have two questions. The first one, so I've spent many years on the National Advocacy Committee for the American Diabetes Association. And in fact, I have colleagues in Washington DC as we speak. Probably not as we speak on the Hill, but they are there today, up advocating for kids and people with diabetes. With respect to the PDA, the parent-designated adult, is that a number that we track? Do we have an idea of how many PDAs there are in the district? Do you know that off the top of your head?
Since I have been in this position, zero.
Zero PDAs?
Mm-hmm.
How is that possible?
So part of the component of a PDA is you have to have somebody willing and able to perform that task. And that has not been the case, from my understanding.
Do we know how many kids in the district have diabetes?
Yes, we do.
Insulin-dependent diabetes that are taking injections at school?
Last, last year, from this slide, was about eighty-four. This year, roughly ninety. That's an estimate without having the information.
Okay, and are those kids in the eight regional schools or are they in the twenty-seven? Do you, I'm asking you to pull things off the top of your head.
Sure, so the students, students with diabetes in the elementary age group would be at the eight regional sites. And middle schools, they can be at any middle school because we have full-time coverage at those schools. And the high schools.
For comparison, in the thirteen years I've been doing school life, encountered one parent-designated adult.
So you raised that, and it's a little concerning because I've had folks express experience with the district where they were told they could not have a parent-designated adult, that they wanted to have a parent-designated adult, and they were told that that was not possible, that if their student needed to receive, needed assistance to receive insulin, they needed to go to one of those eight regional schools.
So sometimes in speaking with our parents, they can have a parent-designated adult. And they may ask school employees if they would like to be a parent-designated adult. But again, if, if there's no school employee willing to do that, parents are also, can have a relative provide that service. And that just has not been the case since I've been here. And I speak with other colleagues in other districts, and it's, it's very, very rare.
I think if, in addition, if we find, if the community has an interest in doing that, or parents have an interest to do that, and they're receiving that message at the school level, that they just need to contact the central office, and we can make sure that we help navigate that process for them.
Okay, thank you. Director Ushka, did you have a question?
Yeah, and hopefully we can clarify that message on the ground because having people need to skip a step and come to CABT creates a barrier for that opportunity in the first place, so I'd like to see that happen.
We will do that.
Thank you.
I just also want to thank Elizabeth and Jennifer. And some of the things that you didn't see in the presentation, because it's very comprehensive, is the team looked at multiple options of how to staff our needs. And what we found, I think collectively, is that the model we have is the most effective and efficient cost-wise, service-wise that we have. And so lots of hours put in to reaffirm that we're on the right track. I think the action steps are very appropriate. We all learned something from that. I think we had individual thoughts and ideas, oh, we could do this, we could do this. But Elizabeth really led us through that in-depth process to say, collectively, we all agree that this, this is the right track to provide services for our students. Now that the challenge is to find and retain nurses that can fulfill those roles. And, and then, you know, repeat that cycle every few years to say, how do we continue to improve? So thank you both, Elizabeth and Jennifer.
And I did have one last question, and that was not related to diabetes. And Mr. Maricomi, this would potentially involve you as well. I'm curious, I've seen other districts, both in the state and in the region, provide space for primary care and dental care in the school. Is that something that we've considered? And I don't know that we necessarily, I see us doing that in partnership, if that's an opportunity, the way that we've been resource mapping and looking at opportunities to leverage bond dollars for community benefit.
I can't say that I've seen it in any other districts, and I've worked from here to La Conner. I would say that at McCarver, we are building space for future build-out of public partnerships with the strength we have there with the Tacoma Housing Authority and other groups. So to focus on that partnerships aspect of our strategic goals, that is happening at McCarver. And I, I see those opportunities happening at all the new schools that we're building.
Okay.
We also have some partnerships, for example, the, the Boys and Girls Club. They provide services where our kids are able to go. And so some of our community partners, when we think about that neighborhood asset mapping, is it's not just about the school, but what are the resources available? And then how do we collaborate with them? So I was just at the Boys and Girls Club the other day, and it was dental day. And lots of our families coming in, rotating through. And then we work with the schools to help facilitate that and the timing of that. So some evidence of that happening in our district, but not necessarily hosted at our individual sites.
Also, the community healthcare or clinics throughout the city do that too. And particularly at the Cambria Center in South Shen. List your kids go up there, at least they did when it first opened for dental, eye, all of the screenings, and they provide that. And they're right there in the neighborhood, so. I think we're doing a pretty good job.
The Seattle School District, through the City of Seattle's families and education levy, does have health clinics in all of its high schools and a number of its middle schools. But that's financed by a separate levy that the city runs. And then the funds are spent by the city to put in providers into the spaces in the high school.
Do those funds pay for services or pay for the built space?
They pay for services. The built space was generated from existing use of space.
And that's what I'm interested in, is if we can leverage, our contribution would be the built space at a place where kids and families gather on a regular basis. And is there opportunity to bring services through partners into the schools? So I'm, I'm hearing that we are working on that at McCarver and open to those sorts of partnerships throughout the city is need and interest arise. Is that inaccurate?
Yes, definitely. You know, in, when we presented the, the Early Learning Visioning Document, we described spaces as fives, tens, fifteens. Some of the conversations that are going around Arlington right now are those itinerant offices, the nursing offices, those spaces that aren't filled five days a week for the entire school day. What kind of partnerships can get into those spaces? And how can we design them so that we can zone them and make them public and give them attributes that can be flexible and, and allow other professionals to come in and use the spaces?
All right, that's great, thank you, thank you very much. Item number twelve, board reports.
No report tonight.
Am I that predictable that I always start with? She was right on the spot. That's good.
No report tonight.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight. Director Wenskill?
I don't have any report either.
Director Ushka?
Well, the three of us were at the Legislative Conference about a week ago. And I stayed and went up to, and visited all of our legislators and passed on our message. And it was good that we were there. And thanked them in advance for their continued work in the middle of July, if that's what it takes to get it done this year. And some of them laughed at that, and some of them did not laugh at that. But they'll remember it in July. There's J Mac tomorrow. We're going to go over the South Sound Sports Commission, which I can't tell you anything about, and that's why I'm receiving a presentation. Quick question. I've had some questions about where we are with high school enrollment levels. And off the top of my head, I couldn't answer that question. And I was wondering if anybody here can, or if we can get a report on where we are.
As far as currently?
Yeah, just the numbers. There's people that were concerned with schools that were, whose enrollment put them in potential question in years past. I don't want to name any school, high school names because it was a very long public meeting because of that error in.
We are, we are not concerned with any of our current high school programming being low. Overall, the district average hasn't been to say, but we were a little bit higher than we anticipated. Some schools were higher than others than what the projected enrollment was. But high school enrollment and, as well as middle school enrollment, hasn't been an area of concern for us. And so we, we think that, that schools should plan accordingly and continue to move forward. And as we moved into staffing, there's no areas that we're saying, oh, my gosh, we really need to do anything different drastically due to enrollment.
Thank you, I'll convey that message because for some reason, there's some holdover anxiety about enrollment, so.
And I, I think that I, we might also. And I, I think that I, we, we might also point, point to some of the partnerships that we've established to help solidify our message that we have a committed investment to all of our high school programming. And we wouldn't establish those kind of clear partnerships if we were planning to do anything different.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Vice President Viall?
I'd just like to give a shout out to Gray Middle School. Two weeks ago, they had their annual scholarship little dinner, and it wasn't a little dinner. It was 484 parents, kids, and grandparents who came. And the staff there gives each child a certificate, who have a 3.2 or above for winter. And also, the seventh grade, the sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade get different medals. And it's a great, wonderful opportunity to celebrate success and for, it's totally done by the teachers at Gray. And it started out, I went to the first one four years ago, and it was not very large, probably 100, and this time it was overflow into other rooms to serve dinners. So I just want to recognize Gray Middle School for what they're doing to celebrate their kids' academic success.
All right, thank you. And I do not have a board report tonight. So we'll move on to item number 13. I'm sorry, Superintendent, did you have something yet? Item number 13, announcement of future board meetings. So next week, a number of the board members will be attending the National School Board Association Annual Conference in Nashville. We were recognized for having a college-going culture and an urban environment, and will have an opportunity to present while at the conference. On Thursday, March 26, there'll be a regular board meeting at 6:00 PM in this room. And on Thursday, April 19, there will be a regular meeting at 6:00 PM in this room. Item number 14, do we have executive session tonight?
The board will meet in executive session for 15 minutes to review the performance of a public employee and to discuss with legal counsel representing the district litigation or potential litigation to which the district is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the district.
And with that, we will adjourn to executive session.